Lord 2019, I should please turn off or silence your cell phones and join me in a moment of silence, please. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Mr. Mingle, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Lawler.
Here.
Spicer.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
And Mayor Edgerton.
Here.
First item is approval of the agenda, may I have a motion, please? And we'll see if there's any changes to it.
So moved.
Okay, in support?
Second.
Okay, so I have discussion, I have two changes I'd like to make, one is adding a second presentation, Presentation B, which is the 4H Creative and Performing Arts, and we have Ms. Sherry Grace and Marquita Frost here to give us an overview of that, and the actual performance, which is a musical play about Albion that was written, choreographed, and performed by Alvin Youth, is tomorrow evening at the Bone Theater, so that's one change. Second change is moving under individual items, Item H, move that from H and put it at the beginning as Item A, so just change the sequence. So I move that we amend the agenda to add the presentation and change the sequence to move Item H up to begin, at the beginning.
H to A?
Yes. Okay. Okay, all those in favor of approving the agenda as modified? No, go ahead, if I've done that wrong, I don't have an issue, tell me. You sure? Okay. Okay, all those in favor of approving the agenda as modified, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. So the first presentation is Albion's Farmers Market Update, Ms. Laura Overholt from the EDC.
Hi, I'm Laura Overholt with the Albion Farmers Market, and I was asked to update you on what's been going on with our farmers market. So our farmers market had a really great year in the year of 2015, and we had a pretty good year last year as well, but produce vendors this year were really struggling, whether it was with the weather or whatever, so we just were really struggling with our market. So we have come up with some great new fun ideas, the city came down and helped us really spruce up the plaza a lot, and paint some things, and get some things, some mulch around the trees, and it looks a lot nicer down there. And we really did a big push to pull in eight new produce vendors, so we have a great program we run down there, I told most of you about it, with, you can run our bridge cards at the market, and if you use your bridge card to buy fresh produce, then you double your money. So it's dollar for dollar, so if you spend $10 on your bridge card, you get $20 of fresh fruits and vegetables if you spend it at the farmers market. So that's a, we can do credit cards down at the market too, so that's a fun thing. But it's really exciting to see eight new produce vendors, we're doing some healthy activities, we've got yoga at the market on Wednesday this week, so at 5 o'clock, there's gonna be a yoga demonstration, we're trying to get some other healthy, active things down at the market that go along with what we're trying to do, which is to get fresh food into the community. So it's, it's been really fun to see the artisan vendors and the craft vendors come in as well, so it's just been a fun event the last two Wednesdays. So we have more than doubled the size of the market, we have more than doubled the amount of customers that have come through the market. Vicki Easterwood from the Albion Healthcare Alliance has been down there at the market doing healthy recipes and giveaways, and so anybody that comes down and they can enter into a drawing for $25 free at the market whenever they try her testing and things like that. So our hours on Wednesday are from 4 to 7 now, we had the hours different, they were from 2 to 5. Wasn't working with people's schedules, we did a survey and we just found that 4 to 7 worked better for people, so we're working really also hard to get food down at the market, so there's some great food in Albion, so we're trying to get some food down at the market, so you can buy your plate of food along with your produce and things like that. So our Saturday market is still going as well, from 9 to 1, but, so we're super excited about what's going on at the market, and I hope everyone knows where our farmers market is here in town, but it's down behind the Bone Theater in St. Harper Plaza, so, so I think that's it.
Thank you, any questions from council? Councilwoman Brown?
Thank you, not a question, I just wanted to thank you for emailing the information out to council. I wasn't aware that you took Bridge, so you know, it was great information packed into that email. I shared it from my precinct page, and I had like over 200 shares, so.
Great.
The words, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Spicer?
Thank you, Mayor, you said that, this is Overholt, you said that you had eight new vendors, bringing the total vendors to what number? Can you, you know?
The last couple Wednesdays, we've had probably 15 to 16 vendors, so, and before that, we had had two or three consistent vendors.
Wow.
So we have really increased the number of vendors.
You're doing something great, and what is the ending date for the market?
The Wednesday markets will end the end of September. So we just have like, yeah, the Saturday ones go to the end of October.
Great. One more question?
Mm-hmm.
No, never mind, I'm finished, thank you.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Do any of the vendors at the Albion Farmers Market do CSA share boxes?
I don't believe so, we did have a vendor that did that a couple years ago, but I don't believe any of the ones do right now. We are looking into bringing in possibly this winter a CSA type box into the Albion area, where you could actually pick and choose what you wanted in your box, it would be a veggie box, or meats, cheeses, salsas, jams, things like that, that you can pick and choose, but it would be, it's kind of like a Netflix subscription based box, so it's kind of a fun thing.
Councilwoman Clark?
Thank you, when I was down there this week on Wednesday, they were discussing what you were looking forward to do this winter, and I made a suggestion, someone said that they was gonna talk to you about that, or some space that maybe if you want to do more things this winter, to have a location.
Okay, I haven't been approached about that yet, but yeah, so we, we have done a year-round market in the past, so it was behind the Food Hub in that area back there, but it's not very visible to, so yeah, we're open to that.
Okay.
Did you have a?
I did, I was trying not to though, but I just wanted to add thank you. The vendors, could you speak a little to where they come from, like where, we have vendors coming from here and where?
Most of them are from the Albion area, a few are a little bit closer to Marshall, might have actual Marshall addresses, or Parma. We have a couple vendors from the Parma area, they don't have a farmers market at all in Parma, but most of them are from, you know, pretty good radius here. So earlier in the season, they do other markets, but we do have one that comes from the Hillsdale area, but they do other markets local during the peak season.
Thank you.
Did you have something, Councilwoman Spicer?
Just a comment, do, well, maybe a question, vendors who, who want to be a part of the farmers market, they contact you, do you do any marketing, like to like send out to farmers in Springport, or how does, can you address that just a little bit?
Yep, I have talked with the Springport Farmers Market Manager, and I've kind of talked with some of the Springport farmers, I did have vended up in Springport, Springport has their own market up there, but I've talked with the vendors in Homer, things like that. So I, we try to market, most of our marketing is done on Facebook, so, or word of mouth, I go and visit farms and talk to people or other markets and talk to them that way. Farmers, produce vendors tend to be creatures of habit, so you know, they, it takes a while, it takes a relationship, and they have to be able to trust their environment, so, but yeah.
Thank you.
And then would you just enlighten all of us and remind us of the food distribution on the second Thursdays of every month?
Second Thursday of every month at the Food Hub, we have a partnership with the South Central Michigan Food Bank in order to do that. So they bring a truck behind the Food Hub, and they unload between 5 and 8,000 pounds of food, I think the most was 8,000 pounds of food. So we have a lot of volunteers, it's a great group of people, the truck comes about 3 o'clock, and we divide it all up, so we never know what's gonna be on the truck except for the 250 gallons of milk, so there's 250 gallons of milk that go out into the community. And the only thing that we ask when people show up is that they can bring their own boxes or bags if they have it, and other than that, we don't have any income requirements, we do ask for the number of their, in their household, how many, so we know how many people we're serving. We aim for around 250 families, and we are very close to that number right now that we're hitting.
And I know you have volunteers that believe in carry the food to the vehicles.
Yes, we have volunteers that will help carry food to the vehicles, because sometimes they, they just can't do that, so.
Yeah, we can walk with them and carry the food for them.
Carry the food for them, because it gets heavy, a gallon of milk, and there's apples, and oranges, and potatoes, and onions, and things like that, that, so, and there's, this is a grant funded thing, our United Way has helped, there's been local churches that have also helped, and have funded that, so.
Thank you. Councilwoman Spicer?
Thank you, one last comment, I just want you to know that I know several people, many people who use, take advantage of the giveaway on the second Thursday of every month, and they only have great things to say about that giveaway, about how fresh the produce is, as well as all of the merchandise that you give away, that you provide, they, it's just great things that I want you to know, people are speaking very well of that issue, so.
It blesses my heart to be able to do it, so it's a fun, it's a fun time, so.
I just wanted to let you know, people are complimenting you, they love it.
Councilwoman Williamson?
In a similar fashion, I was just gonna say thank you for all the hard work at the Food Hub, that you've been doing at the Food Hub and transforming how that's gonna work, it's not unnoticed, I want to remind my colleagues and the public that sometimes in our community, the Food Hub and the farmers market and some of the advantages that we have there for our community are the only reason that some families have food. It's the reason that kids can go to school and focus, because they had a, they had a meal before they came to school, and it is a basic service in our community, and I'm just really glad that we can keep it going, we need to make sure we can support it as much as possible, so thank you.
Thank you very much. We have no public hearing this evening, so we'll open up for public comments on agenda items? Oh geez, I did skip over it again, man. And I'm even the one that asked to put it on there. Good lord, okay, so my apologies to Ms. Grace and Ms. Frost. Next one is the presentation on the 4H Creative and Performing Arts, and this is the flyer.
Thank you very much, good evening to the council and mayor, thank you for having us here this afternoon, evening, it's been a long day for us, but we are excited to share the news of what we're gonna be doing tomorrow evening. Tomorrow, the 4H Creative and Expressive Arts will be doing a production, an original production of a program called Albion's First. Albion is well-known for creating T-Ball, we are well-known for creating Mother's Day. Culturally, we've had one of the first, did I do something wrong? No. Oh, culturally, we, we have the first quinceañera that was done by Hispanic family in Albion, and we have the first African-American traveling choir that was created by Ms. Willamay Pearson called the Goodwill Singers. So all of our young people did research throughout the summer, and they helped us to write a play that will tell these stories. So we're gonna hear about Mr. Sokarski, we're gonna hear about Lucy Lerma, you're going to hear about, what's her name, Juliette, Juliette Calhoun Blakely?
Yes.
And Sister Willamay Pearson, so please come out, this play was written and produced by the youth, they write the play, they choreograph dances, some of the songs are original, and some are covers, a lot of them will be covers this time.
Don't turn this in, okay?
Some are covers, and we have about 30 youth that have come out for six weeks, and they've worked very hard to produce this play. The one thing that I want to say is that it is at the Bone Theater at 6:30, the doors open at 6:00 PM, and admission price is very minimal, it is $5, but we are asking for any donations that may help. We've had a lot of support from the community to bring this program to the youth for over 20 years, so thank you Albion, thank you to the parents that have allowed their children to participate in our program, and we've had such a diverse audience for over 20 years, and we have some great young people that we're going to have that evening. And so Sherry will just talk to you about a little bit of the other things we do other than singing, dancing, and acting.
Our program, our program is also a leadership mentoring, the performing arts only is a vehicle to get the young people there. Most of our young people stay for three, four years, and you'll see change in a lot of these young people. Some of our young people have went on to the performing arts, others have been leaders in their community, or they have mentored somebody else. Lately, our young people have performed at Michigan State University Wardens Center in front of 1,500 youth, and were very well received. We're kind of tired of the children, because we were with them last night too, and we went to Detroit and seen "We Can Dance Now" by the Marvelettes, they seen Mosaic, who is a youth theater professionally out of Detroit, and it was just amazing, our young people were well behaved, and we had a good time with that, so I think this program, we have not taken any tax dollars or anything like that, but you know, been supportive all these years, says something about the young people that have came through our program, and that as volunteers and stuff like that, we keep on doing this, and I think it's important to this community. And we're gonna have someone, yes ma'am?
I'd just like to say Saturday morning after we got, we were doing interviewing, we went out to the.
American Legion?
American Legion, and that young lady sang.
Are you gonna have that? And also, we're gonna be with, what, the beat?
On the 24th, yes, our young people will be doing two hours, they'll be performing at 2 o'clock, and then at 4 o'clock, we'll be on Collaboration Corner, right in between Big B's and the, the, oh, Blon Center, sorry, I can't think. But we're also this year, we're really honored to have, because we are honoring Mother's Day, we have the American Legion Auxiliary, and the American Legion's veterans are going to participate with us, they will be doing a flag presentation along with the singing of the National Anthem, and you're about to hear what Ms. Reed heard Saturday. The young people are why we do this, we have so many talented young people in this community, and the schools here, they do offer some of that, but our young people have a special knack for it, and they really love to perform. And so this young lady, her name is Ella, I'll let her introduce herself, and then she's going to sing the National Anthem. So at that time, please stand.
Please stand. Wait, what am I saying?
Oh, you're gonna introduce yourself.
I'm Ella Latamoye. What else did I say? I'm going to 10th grade, I go to Marshall High School, and I've been at 4H for like four or five years, I think. And that's it, right? Okay. Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, those bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you so much Ella for sharing your talent with us and being with us for the last four or five years, and we know you're only gonna do great things with your talent. She's been singing since 10 AM this morning, so forgive her for a little bit of the song, but we just called her and asked her to come, so she didn't even know she was gonna do this until like maybe 30 minutes ago. So, yes, so she just comes and do what we ask, and so that's what we love about these young people, they are leaders of the community. Do we have any questions from the council about the program?
Councilwoman Spicer?
Not about the program, about that beautiful voice. My god, that was amazing, that was wonderful, awesome, thank you, thank you.
Councilwoman Brown?
Thank you, Ella, you made me tear up. Awesome job.
Thank you.
Very proud of you, very proud of the 4H program, I know we've seen some talent come through this community for years, and thank you. Awesome thing.
Feel like we're supposed to have a golden ticket or something, you're on to the next round!
I also want to thank you for the program, because my daughter was one that went through your program, went to Michigan State for about a year and a half after graduating, and the mentoring program did a lot for her, so I really appreciate you.
And we hope you come tomorrow, because it is my birthday.
Be the best gift ever.
So I just wanted to say, because we have a planning commission meeting tomorrow, some of the community will be there, I need to be there, Ms. Reed needs to be there, so unfortunate for you, I got a private performance along with the American Legion rep, Mr. Smith, today at lunch, and I told everybody down there, it was, it was amazing, and you have an incredible voice.
Yes, you do.
And we just definitely want to thank her grandmother, Ms. Charmaine Bogan, for allowing her to come and share her gift. She takes, she takes after her grandmother, her grandmother has a beautiful voice as well, and I love her as well, so we have great parents, community members, and today we had a catered lunch from some ladies in the community, Ms. Elias, Ms. Williams, Ms. Davis, Ms. Kay Knight, Ms. everybody, it was a whole group of them that just came down and spoiled the kids with lunch, and that's something that we really need, just like you said, some of the kids don't get a meal. Our program serves young people that have minimal income at home, and so we don't have lunch for them every day, so some kids struggle to have a meal, and they're with us about five or six hours a day. So it is a blessing to get that support from the community to come out and help us, especially on a day when we're there from 10 till 6, so that was a blessing. And Ms., Mr. Reed is coming with hot dogs tomorrow, is that his name? Dennis, yeah, yeah, Dennis is coming, and he's gonna cater, one of the other parents is paying for hot dogs tomorrow, so, yeah, we're getting a blessing two days in a row for these kids, so thank you.
And of course, none of this can happen, none of this is available if it's not for you two, people like you in the community, and I know you had some Albion College fellows helping out, and it is just so, so, so proud that you're doing this, and I can't thank you enough. Keep up the fantastic work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Public comments this evening on agenda items, if you have a public comment, please come forward, tell us your name and where you live. Seeing no public comments? Okay, city attorney requests a closed session under the Opens Meeting Act to consider the dismissal, suspension, disciplining of, or to hear complaints or charges brought against, or to consider a periodic personnel evaluation of a public officer, employee, or staff member of the individual agent, and so the city attorney has requested that, may I have a motion? Okay, all right, any discussion, all those in favor of adjouring, oh, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Edgerton?
Yes. Adjourn. Adjourn.
Exactly.
You know, that's a liberal point.
Yeah.
That's how he's a weird man. He's a raspy man.
Exactly, because he's special, player of faith.
Old Woody Hayes was nuts.
Yeah.
You've heard of him?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Doc, Doc was running down the sidelines and nobody in Ohio could catch him. So Woody steps out in the field, wham! Just level this kid.
Kind of ended the whole Woody Hayes era.
Woody Hayes was no coach.
Yeah, I said that. Took us the long road to Ohio.
You said Woody Hayes makes a lot of mistakes.
Oh, there is Woody Hayes, full of parlor, shrines.
I would say there is massive pressure, a lot of things, so. Information, because Herman Lyer, he should have come over again. Yeah, Lyer was successful. So, yeah.
So who's the primary football player? You can say your neighbors. If you're a student.
Yeah.
And of course, you have to wish you stay alive. Which is actually insane.
Yeah, you have that train, I don't know whether it was. Yeah, and even the week before, you won't have a football game. It's all over. So you don't really have like an outside. I always think like, oh, it's a tough one. How much does an old school still have going in the present?
I always thought that a lot. You know, it was not like a possible. I always think like, oh, it's a tough one. See, there you go. There's nothing like the day, like, I would stay versus I don't follow me. Oh, yeah. We have a mission, a mission saying that you put our Sparty, St. Sparty, in these places. He has a good face, sir.
Oh, really?
Oh, yes.
He's a good boy.
Yeah. He has twenty-four hour coverage. Very good, that's Sparty.
There was a time, I think it was like in the mid-seventies or teens. But a group of Michinians sat down and killed. We were just like. But what they didn't realize, there were four Bruce's brothers. So you got.
Three more, yeah.
But they definitely, I think, a lot of boys came here where you start to lay down some ass with them.
Anything that I recall happened, I remember I was state, I was state, to have a celebration. I couldn't promise it. And they called it a key show. And then they did it back to the streets. Now, I'm rushing out, that was canceled for. And you're writing, or above that, it came to four or nine to twelve, you know, writing. But this time they said, you know, it's over, I'm not going back to it. But this last time that happened, the time before that, that, you know, before, they go to the National Park. So that evening, I just remember, I was born during the week, celebrating later. And people started constantly running back to the cops. And started like, who's doing this? Now, I'm all challenging, um, minority, and that's actually, that's.
And how many kids in the rival, they, everyone's deep, we will have. The ATM and all numbers.
See, this is just like a celebration. You know, what wouldn't have happened if it was the National Park, or if it was the National Park. A lot of those were playing along, fortunately, because they broke the law very hard at the same time. So you can stay up during the evening from college students, all following along the area. Because you put me in some trouble, and it's a good thing I'm very thorough.
There are some pretty crazy parties around there, Michigan, Ohio. And of course, it's right in the middle of the city. Ohio State, it starts off High Street.
It's so great, though. It's so great.
Oh, yeah.
I got a, I got a marching. For a contest, I mean, it's so great.
I used to go there a lot.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I used to go there and watch the boys. I mean, I always had to do the question of, oh, this new game. Something to go up there and watch. Well, you're trying to do a sit-up there.
Oh, I have a thing about me having one of those. Maybe it's, oh, if the school has. They have, I didn't, I didn't. I'd say, I'd say, oh, it's bigger than that.
Especially when starting out at stuff like the agricultural.
Oh, yeah.
But they, they got.
And they completed their campus, A.T.I.
So it's pretty sprawled out.
Depending on what your major is, yeah, that's what you take. And most of them involve two gun in the downtown campus area.
That's what I was appreciating about Ohio State was it was about two square miles. You're walking reasonably in ten minutes, or at least they said that you were going to walk. These are ten minutes.
And of course, Ohio State is such a large medical school. And it's, I think, uh, we have a lot of sticking up. And, you know, luckily for me, at the time, they just built the Ross Park, it was still next to it. And it was almost as big as the original cost. And it was strictly. And they also got the overall land, it's pretty rare. They did, they did, uh, a, you know, a string line, it was super long. And this thing runs on, it's like five thousand three, something on batteries. It's like, you know, but it was over two hundred and forty miles. It's a decent, like, five mile battery.
Yeah. Yeah. I just have a pleasure doing this, you can, this for, this is the same, this I did. Okay, two weeks ago, I was talking to you. And you, you just kept walking around, hardly for a night, actually. Oh, yeah. It was awesome. I was stopping, you know. Yeah. So it's very, 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 very. What, what, now, what? That's pretty easy, they want to walk on it. It's not a hard job, it's a, it's a.
That's like the America.
Oh, we got, okay. Well, we have a department, you have to teach. They, they have a county, they are charged the county. And we tried to, with, with things like that, but we polarized it that day. That same day, we tried again, there's a strike, there's a, there's a. Uh, then, they did the original chores, and then it was a lot of, it was nothing. We finally, that's what we're up to, ready to go, anyways, we're cheap. It's another person's basket. Yeah, we are ready to roll, here we go. And we polarize a little, then we go, we have to try. And then, we move on to the nation, then we try, then, uh, we're getting part of the, uh, do. Strike, we're on strike, and just, they're climbing like they're last year, even if it's October. My problem on that is just how we can back, like, have no, no.
That's really silly.
That's what I'm saying. So I'm in the process of trying to give me some context, so I, at least have some correspondence. It's all going to be Friday, and the unions, and again, we don't want to get in the middle of that. You guys, it's, I mean, just going to say, we can't have a lot of that, so. Not acceptable, and then you should like, start over with it. We try, we're already, you, you, you kind of handle, well, you're really, it's like, that's. That's not, yeah, so, yeah, so just we, yeah, we polarize it that, in that same day. So we're, we finished it, then we get them, and we were like, we would have polarized it. This morning, we didn't know what we were doing. So that's what we're working on. There's a lot to take. And it's, it's sad, because we've been working, but this is forty years, we've been working in that section. No, we find reason, yes, it's going to happen. And those four people that live down this stretch, even if you try, yeah, we're going to keep making some, so it's costly. I think it's, that's why, you're, you're grading like a, but it's, I can't even say it's a rap, but it's not. It's been polarized down to the base. You're going to have mud, everything. Well, I'll say, yeah, we can't reroute these work, because it's going to be bad. Yeah. It's just, oh, so I'm in the process of trying to make some context. Well, once we're polarizing, when is it the next day? There was that problem, we need to break the goal, we're related. We're in a base, we're, maybe we done in three days, we haven't really done it all three days. Now we're, yeah, this, so hopefully I'll get some information back. Like I said, I want to get to know their battles, their business. Well, I know, it's my best, it's, 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 yeah, now we're already once.
Well, he wasn't here. He's got to take the heat if he wants to.
Okay, I'll recall the, our council meeting here August nineteenth back to order. Mr. Maygo, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Lawler?
Here.
Spicer?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
And Mayor Edgerton?
Here.
First item is consent calendar approval of special session minutes August first and special session minutes August fifth. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Support?
Supporting.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the special session minutes for the first of August and for the fifth of August, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? They're approved. Okay. Okay. Next item is request approval for seven thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars to send a new public safety officer to the Police Academy in Lansing Community College.
First, I would like Mr. Carter to come up here and introduce himself to everybody.
How you doing?
I'm good.
My name's Javon Carter. I was born and raised in Detroit. I moved out of Detroit to Olivet College to pursue my career in criminal justice. I completed three years at Olivet College. I'm currently working at Calum County Juvenile Home, you know, for a year. Looking to resign my position there and pursue my career in public safety.
So because of the timeframe, the Police Academy actually starts Wednesday this week. And we are one step from getting him into that academy. And I'm not sure we're going to be able to accomplish that. If we don't accomplish that, my goal then would be to try to get into an academy as of first of January. So it would just be a four-month delay on that, so.
So may I have a motion to approve?
Can I have a question?
Yes.
Can I have a motion?
Do you have a question for clarification?
I just wanted to ask a question, is that, if that's okay with everybody?
Okay, let's go ahead and do a motion, we'll get support, and then we'll have discussion. You can ask whatever question you want.
Okay.
Okay, so it's?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Discussion. Councilwoman Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. Will the officer be included in the training dealing with mental health issues?
They get some of that at the Police Academy now. And then eventually, hopefully, we can get him to the same training that we've been sending the other officers to.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilwoman Brown?
Thank you, so I guess, when will you know if you can get him in there with, please?
Tomorrow morning, probably.
Tomorrow morning?
Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's two steps, two tests that he has to take through MCOS to be able to get into the academy. And so far, I haven't been able to get a test scheduled or get MCOS to give me a delay on that and still get him into the academy. So I'm trying desperately to. So I'm trying desperately to get that done. Um, but if I can't, then they aren't going to let him start the academy on Wednesday, and if he can't start the academy Wednesday, then he can't do it. So, uh, they're pretty strict on that. So my, like I said, my hope is to make this happen tomorrow, but if I can't make it happen, then it would be January.
Okay, and.
Councilwoman Brown?
Thank you, and this comes out of the.
Um, because we've been short of a public safety officer most of the year, we should have the funding to cover that, correct?
Okay, that's, thank you.
It's coming for a council because it's over five thousand dollars. Any other questions or comments by council? Okay, Mr. Mingo, would you please read the roll?
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Okay, that is approved.
Thank you, Javon.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Welcome.
We'll be here tomorrow.
Yes, welcome.
Okay, all right. Next item, request approval, second reading and adoption ordinance twenty nineteen oh six, and ordinance to amend ordinance fifty-eight one sixty-five for consumption of alcoholic beverages in public places. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a support? Okay, discussion. Did you want to summarize it for us?
Sure, so, uh, if you recall, uh, in the past, the cities had ordinances that basically only allowed consumption of alcohol with permits in Big Tree Park and the Ison House. This ordinance, um, expands that such that, um, you can have, uh, organizations, nonprofit organizations or businesses can, um, consume alcoholic beverages outside, um, during special events, holidays, fundraisers, as authorized by the city and the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. General consumption outside by individuals is still prohibited by by city ordinance, so you can't just walk down the street and, you know, have a beer. Um, this, as I indicated, only applies to businesses and nonprofits. At last, the last time we went over this ordinance, um, uh, Councilmember Williamson wanted to add in, um, that review by finance to make sure that the businesses that were applying were current. So I've added that into, um, it's par, it's number five on page two. Um, so I've added the Finance Department for Review as part of that. And that's basically it.
Any comments or questions by council? Mr. Mingo, would you read the roll, please?
Councilmember Reed.
Uh, no.
Brown.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
And Clark.
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Okay, so the ordinance twenty nineteen oh six is approved and adopted. Okay, next item, update on Dahl Rumpel property. Mr. Phillips.
Well, I hope you've driven by and seen the stakes that are out at at the Dahl Rumpel property. That's where we will be posting signs that say danger, contaminated area, keep out. Um, all of those will be posted along there. We should have all of the signs and posts within about three weeks to put in. Uh, for the meantime, we're going to put caution tape up around the post or the the stakes that are there. Uh, we also have a a large amount of millings that will be creating that path through the Dahl Rumpel property. And that will then also be posted so that people are, understand, or hopefully the signage will create the understanding that they need to stay on that path. And that's about where we are.
Councilwoman Brown?
Thank you, so you said three weeks to get all the signs, that's three weeks in in addition to the two weeks that's already been, or three weeks total?
We got them ordered last Friday, so it should be in, they told us within three weeks.
And then I also, oh.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes, thank you, so. For, at the last meeting, we had discussed the options for, um. Is that going to be part of the city manager report, or remember, I had asked, I had for, um, plan timeline, how much it would cost to do?
Fill in.
Yeah, to. About doing a path, or did we want to fill the?
Oh.
To address the whole field?
From, we gave the numbers last time on the dress, but the cost.
Yeah.
Between a hundred thousand and four hundred thousand dollars to do the fill, so, um, my understanding from the council at the point was the path and signs were what we wanted done.
Councilwoman Brown?
Thank you, so that that was, what we gave you, that that was like the right now, short term, this is what.
Okay.
We need done now, because it's a present issue. Um, but it was off, I thought we were going to have information on, you know, these are the two things I recommend. This is how much it will cost. Um, this is a timeline on how fast we can get this done.
Right.
And so hopefully, we can have that next meeting for our consideration.
So I thought we gave.
What we have.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm.
I thought we'd given a foot, a a foot cost for fencing, and it was really astronomical and.
But that was for chain link fencing, and another option was for horse fencing, farm fencing, a different kind of fencing, that I thought was going to be a lot less expensive. And so we had talked about a couple of things, fencing the entire perimeter, or putting the pathway through it and fencing to keep people on the path.
Okay, I got confused.
It's okay. That's why we talk, that's why we have dialogue, it's fine. I just, um, I don't, I. I I think everybody understands this is like really important to me.
Yeah, right.
It is, um, you know, my precinct, and I'm telling you, every day I watch people walk across that field and my stomach drops. So, you know, I I have seen the stakes, so I knew something was going on, but I just.
And I want to assure people too, just walking across that field is not a dangerous thing to do. It's digging in the dirt, playing there, that would be much more serious than somebody just walking across, but the path will take care of a lot of that, so.
Okay, if that's the route we go, right?
Well, the path, we've got the millings to put millings down for a path, that's really not going to be any more cost than just the city work being done.
Okay, so I maybe.
So we were going to go forward with the path.
You were going to.
Right. We're going to take millings from a road and put them across the top of it, it won't be a blacktopped path, but it'll be a.
We had talked about that before too, um, because there were some projects that.
Right.
That you already had access to that for free, okay, remember that conversation?
Yep.
And see, that's, I I don't mean that, but that's what I thought we were, had talked about doing, was making sure that the signage was appropriate, and that the signage blocked in that path. And and we, but apparently, we had talked about fencing all that in as well.
Councilwoman Brown?
Thank you, so I think that's where the signals got crossed.
Yep.
Because we definitely wanted the signage, we definitely said, that's something we need right now.
Immediately.
And then we talked about, because I remember asking for recommendations, because this is what you all do, I don't know what, you know, cost effective and what, whatever, so, um. What would you bring two recommendations to council with solid numbers as far as cost? And a timeline on how fast that can be done, is what I think we all thought, okay.
Well, and and we're moving, we were moving forward with the path, because we thought that's what they wanted, so the signs and the path were the two things that we got with, and we had the funding to do that, so.
Okay, that, which is, which is fine, but I I just, now that I think we've discussed it, I think everybody now is on the same page.
Yeah.
We, as a council, had made a decision as far as we wanted fencing, or if we wanted a path, or if we wanted, I mean, because we had talked about a lot of different options. But we were waiting for the top two recommendations and prices for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Yep.
So to sum it up, and then any council member that disagrees can correct me. Signs, we've we've completely behind that, get the signs up as soon as you can, and you're doing that, and it's within the next three weeks, I believe.
Yes.
Okay, and then there, you have the materials, and the cost is not outrageous to put a mill, millings path across there that will encourage people to walk on that.
Right.
Uh, but you're going to come back and tell us what it's going to cost to do that, what it's going to cost to to put a fence up around the perimeter, or just along the sides of the of the path. Okay, because I'm of a mind that the signs alone are not sufficient, and that we have an obligation to make a reasonable effort to keep people off of the property. And in my mind, that's a fence, but that's just, I'm just one voice. Okay, any other council member want to comment? Councilmember Reed, Councilwoman Reed?
Have letters been sent to the people that live in the, in the, uh, apartments across the street of Darinville concerning that? Or to the Housing Commission to get letters out to them concerning?
I don't believe the city has, and I'm not aware whether the county did that or not when it was in their possession.
That seems like something that could be done so that they know exactly what's going on.
Councilwoman Clark?
I think we did talk about that part of it also in the last discussion that we had about getting some literature out. Um, and the meeting is tomorrow. Um, so we can, I can address that while I'm there, and get back to the council at the next meeting.
Councilwoman Brown?
Thank you, and I just, I think that'd be awesome. I just, there, I know the residents of the Housing Commission are not the only people that walk across that field.
Right.
Like, it's kind of like a connection between this point, this side of town to that side of town, so there are a lot of people that utilize that area. But I, that's, that would be great if you could address that after the meeting.
That's where the mouse travels.
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
And then, one thing I'd like to mention, we actually have had two interested parties involved in wanting to purchase some part or all of that property. So I wouldn't encourage the city to do anything as far as cleanup on the property at this point, um, because they can get brownfield monies and so forth that could help with that. Um, and so I think we're taking the right steps here as far as a path and fencing and signage.
Okay. No other comments? Thank you, Mr. Phillips, appreciate it. Okay. Next item, request approval, first reading of ordinance twenty nineteen oh seven, and ordinance to amend ordinance fifty-eight one sixty-seven drug paraphernalia. May I have a motion? No, this is just the reading, I'm sorry.
Yep.
So, city attorney, would you please?
No, it's it's a request approval, so you need a motion in a second.
You're right, my apologies, okay, motion, please.
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Okay. Discussion. Now, if you would give.
Sure, so, um, I I mentioned this at a previous council meeting, as the council's aware. Um, last November, um, what's referred to as Initiated Law Number One of twenty eighteen, which is also the Michigan Regulation and Taxation Marijuana Act passed. It it did a lot of different things, one of the things that it did is a decriminalized, um, adult possession of what's referred to in the statute as marijuana accessories. So basically marijuana paraphernalia for those individuals that are twenty-one years of age and older. Um, so our current ordinance basically bans all drug paraphernalia. So what I've done is I've kind of, I've carved it out into two different parts. One that says, if you're twenty-one or older, it's no longer a crime to, uh, possess marijuana accessories as prescribed in the state statute. However, the rest of it, um, the non-marijuana accessories, still remains a misdemeanor under, um, under our local ordinance. And, um, the other exceptions are also, um, persons over twenty-one cannot transfer, um, marijuana accessories to someone under twenty-one. Um, no person can possess, um, any drug paraphernalia in, um, schools, and, um. Persons, and I, as I've indicated, persons under twenty-one are still not allowed to possess marijuana accessories themselves. So, um, I've modified the ordinance to bring us into compliance with state law, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilwoman Clark?
So, if if if, excuse me, if a person should have marijuana and get arrested for one reason or another, um, and it's not pertaining to the idea that they have marijuana, um, and there's a suspicion or, or reason to suspect that there's some other substance mixed in that, how would that proceed from there?
If I'm understanding your question, so look, by way of example, if you think that, um, something, another controlled substance is combined with marijuana that they have on them. The other controls, depending upon what the other controlled substance is, uh, and what schedule it falls onto, is probably not going to be legal. So that would make the substance as a whole illegal, it would probably be seized and destroyed after some sort of testing, whether we field test it or whatever.
And if there was reason to believe there was something else in it, we would send it to the Michigan State Police Crime Lab, and they would do the testing on it to determine what what else was there, other than marijuana. Um, if it was cocaine, you could be charged for possession of cocaine at that point, so.
So the reason why I'm asking is just for officers not to be targeted as, um. What do I want to say? Targeted as picking on or or abusing that type, is there, is there anything that we need to do as council? So in other words, um, if I was smoking marijuana and I decided to add cocaine to it, and my behaviors were showing that I was high other than marijuana because of how I was or was not acting, um, you know, I don't want them to be in a, without having anything written. I don't want them to be suspect, to be, um, as targeting or things like that, because we all know that happens.
Okay, but it really doesn't pertain to paraphernalia.
Yeah, I mean, and in that situation, if they're consuming a controlled substance other than marijuana, it's still legal under state law.
Okay.
Um, the, um, I I will say this, I think, and 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 the chief can speak to this too. As of the last year, year and a half, we haven't really seen a lot of marijuana paraphernalia. What we're primarily dealing with with paraphernalia now are hypodermic needles for heroin and, um, and related things like that. Those are really, that's the, that's the bulk of the paraphernalia reports that I'm seeing. And so those are, that's obviously conduct that we want to curtail in the city, because it's, um, you know, it's it's heroin, ethanol, things like that, that are really dangerous.
Any other comments or questions by council? Would you read the roll?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Next item, discussion of a speed study on North Eaton Street.
I believe Councilperson Clark asked for this, but I don't, did you have any comments, or you want to hear what I know?
I want to hear what you know.
Okay. Um, we met with MDOT a week or two ago to discuss speeding downtown, um, on Superior Street. And the one thing that we found out about this is if we have MDOT do a speed study, and it is determined that the average speed is forty-five or fifty miles an hour, they will actually raise the speed limit up to the average speed. It's not going to slow it down, and because North Eaton Street's a state highway, again, that's controlled by MDOT, um, I don't encourage us to to be doing speed studies necessarily through MDOT to do that. Um, with that being said, I've been trying to do some research on my own about how we can do our own type of speed studies. There is a small black box that we can buy that we can mount on a pole, um, that will actually clock vehicles going in either direction, and give us the average speed at the time of day that it's going on. Uh, they can tell us whether it's a truck or a car, or like a semi truck or a car, um, and the speeds that they're going. So, uh, to get that piece of equipment and the software that goes with it, I believe is about four thousand dollars. I haven't got a clear answer back from the vendor yet, exactly what that is, but I can present that at the next council meeting. Um, while it's below the amount that we necessarily need council approval, I don't have the funds in my budget to pay for it, so, um. I think it would be a great piece of equipment to have, because then when people complain about speeding on their street, we can go mount this for a week or two, get the average speeds. I can know when the problems are, I can assign officers for those problems, it just makes it a whole lot easier to, there's a lot of times I'll go to people, and so what time is it? Well, it happens all the time, well, then I send an officer up, then they sit there for an hour and see two cars drive by, and none of them are speeding, you know, so it just.
That's the officer's thing.
But, um, so this would be a great piece of equipment for us to have, to use all the time in different places, but, um, just a suggestion.
Councilwoman Brown?
Thank you, so, and you probably don't have this information, because you probably didn't know I was going to ask this question.
I can try.
Um, how many tickets are, speeding tickets do you give up there in that area?
Uh, yeah, I don't have that information. I could probably get that information, but.
Okay, I mean, I think it would be good to see if, is that an area that, like, even by speeding tickets, you kind of see it might be something, I don't know.
So you were asking about a a speed study because you feel the the traffic is moving too fast, and you want it to slow down, okay?
You know, and and police cars being present slow people down.
Yes.
Um, and so sometimes.
Just park there all.
Park, well, but sometimes sitting there running traffic, you're slowing people down, people notice you there, and so forth. And so this box being mounted on a pole, nobody would know, and we'd get a better sense of what's. And so, this box being mounted on a pole, nobody would know, and we'd get a better sense of what's happening and when it's happening, and maybe be able to address some of the concerns a little better.
Councilmember Williamson.
I just want to like really echo what Councilmember Clark is saying about Eaton Street. So, knowing from people at the Community Foundation and the EDC that work there, people work at the grocery stores, people work at the car dealerships. That is a high foot traffic area in town, and people just blow through there. And it's easy, and we're all guilty of it, it's easy to go fast. It's a wide road, it's expansive. I've caught myself going more than forty down there. Really, it almost feels like it should not be that fast even.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, and then with that light being.
Pre-move.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, a, a, and I've noticed higher speeds in a lot of areas in town. I've addressed it with the officers and requested extra patrol in those areas and more speeding, speed enforcement. Even on Michigan Avenue, Hannah Street, Erie Street, I get complaints on all those areas, so, and I see it myself, so.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Spicer.
Thank you. So, sitting me with a kit, one here. What type of timeframe would you need or would it take to get an assessment of the traffic in that area? You need a week or two or a month or how?
I have no way of really doing an assessment at this time.
I thought you said you hooked something to the.
If, if we purchase it, it's about four thousand dollars to purchase it, so.
A thousand, how much?
About four thousand dollars to purchase it, so. No, it's not, but I, by the next meeting, I can have all that information on it and get it to you so you know exactly what I'm talking about. And with a quote as well. So, I just, I've been trying to get it from the vendor and haven't got it yet, so.
Counselor McClark.
And I know four thousand dollars may not or be in the budget or at this time, but me personally, I would rather see us spend four thousand dollars and slow the traffic down in these areas than have vitality that happens in the future because we didn't address it.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you, I'm just thinking, is possible to rent one?
I could check on that, I don't know.
Okay.
I haven't heard that, so, I mean, I, I, I just happened to come across this digging through stuff, so, and like I said, I've been trying to play phone tag with the vendor, trying to get more information, so.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Next item, request approval, resolution twenty nineteen twenty-nine, a resolution to designate appropriate methods of city council electronic communications for official city business. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Okay, discussion. Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you. So, I asked Attorney Hartness to draft a resolution that council should be using our city emails when we're discussing city-related business and not our personal emails. It's an issue that's come up in the past, but it's still an issue. So, I just felt like if the council could adopt a resolution to agree that we would all use our city emails to conduct city business, then that would be a great form and show of unity in doing the ethical thing.
Any other, any other comments? Any further discussion? Okay. So, it's been moved and seconded for adoption of the resolution twenty nineteen twenty-nine, a resolution to designate appropriate methods of city council electronic communications for official city business. All those in favor say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, resolution is adopted. Okay, next item, Michigan Marijuana Regulatory Agency's public forum. They're going to hold it on the twenty-ninth of August for Social Equity Outreach Program today. Oh, thank you, thank you. Okay. Request approval, resolution twenty nineteen thirty, to approve pursuing MDOT Transportation Economic Development Funds Category A Grant Application. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Support? I'll support. Oh, did you, okay, Councilmember Clark, discussion.
So, after Conoff Insulation announced that they were doing their expansion that they're doing of, I think it was thirty-two jobs or so, there was a, an informal request from them to consider repaving of Clark Street from North Street to B-Drive South. Or B-Drive North, I'm sorry, or the expressway.
Clark Street to where?
From North Street, north to the highway. So, on Clark Street. Because they're doing this expansion, that puts us in line for MDOT transportation funds that we otherwise wouldn't be able to get. And so, we contacted MDOT, and we also contacted Calhoun County because they control twenty-nine percent of that road. Yeah, twenty-nine percent of that road is theirs. And consideration of spending funds to redo that road. Part of the reason we did this was Clark Street, I believe, was the second choice after North Street for being redone because of its condition. And being able to get grant funding to go along with any city funding to work on a road, especially if we can get half of it paid for, is huge because our funds don't go very far. And so, we pursued this and are bringing it to council for your decision to make, whether you're interested in doing this or not.
Questions by council. Councilwoman Lawler.
Thank you. Has, have we applied for the grant?
We have done the preliminary stuff that we need to do, but we need council approval to apply for the grant, I believe.
Do we have an idea what the matching funds will be?
Yeah, I was going to say that.
Ken or Tom or?
Well.
How much?
The, the thirty-four jobs that were created would create about three hundred and forty thousand dollars. The estimated project was around six hundred and fifty, so there's a three hundred and ten thousand dollar shortfall. That was a real quick, rough estimate done by Mickey Bitner, Whitman, just to give us an idea how much of that really plays into the county and with their twenty-nine percent of the road and what is exactly ours. You know, those numbers would, would flip a little bit, but not, not very much. What we have done, Haley has done, has put in the letter of, or through Whitman, has got the letter of interest into MDOT because the closing date occurred a week and a half ago for this grant. So, we, we were really in a time crunch, so the letter of interest is there. But the actual writing for that grant has not been done because a part of that process then is a resolution of support from the council. It's a lot of money, and it's not a lot of money, it's not money that we have. And that was one of our discussions as we talked about of all of this, but of course, it, it falls to the council to make that decision.
And water lines and sewage lines will be disrupted, so it's possible there may be other sources to help offset the cost of the road project.
There could be, but there are very few services in that area, and most of the main is fairly new in that area. So, you know, we could, we could help in justifying some of that, but our service area for water and sewer is very small on Clark Street from North Street to B-Drive.
Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you. So, the area between North Street and B-Drive, how, is that a mile? What's the, what's the distance?
About a half a mile, I think.
About a half a mile. Okay. And this resolution is asking for us to commit to two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, right? What I'm reading is this, we're, we're in the.
Three hundred.
Three hundred and ten.
So, that's changed?
No, I didn't read what was on there. Was there something different? I don't know. I, I'm, I'm working with a number of like six fifty, six hundred and fifty thousand, is there something? Haley can probably help with this as well.
So, the number that's listed in the resolution would be our portion of the local match. And the remainder of that three hundred and ten comes from the, from the county road department. So, their match was roughly sixty-four to sixty-nine thousand dollars. And then combined with ours, that's where we get the, the total three hundred and ten thousand.
So, the city's portion is how much?
Two.
Two forty-four, five nine.
Two forty-four, okay. And if this is approved, then that gives you the authorization to apply for the grant.
Yes.
But if for some reason we decide not to fund it, we just turn the grant down and forget it.
Yes, it's not, it's not locking us into this project. This just getting an approval from council just allows us to move forward with actually just submitting the application for the grant. So, we still, we, it's not feasible for us, we can always not utilize that opportunity. Just, we have to get approval to even move forward with the application, yes.
The, the hard part about this is, this is a street that we need to fix. If we don't fix it now with funds that we're getting, we're going to have to fix it later with other funds that we get. And we get our major street funds every quarter, every four years, I believe it is. Yeah. We'll get it off straight.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. When I had a conversation with Mickey last week, I believe it was, the way he explained it to me is we are entitled to the small urban grant every, well, Eastern Calhoun County is entitled to it every other year with the rotation going one year to the city, then, and then in two years later, when it's up again, it will go to the county. And then, two years after that, to the city, so there's that rotation. So, ours would technically come every four years, I guess, if you look at it that way. For twenty twenty, they, the, the money would go to the county for, I can't remember what street.
We use that for North Street this year, so this was our year to use that grant money for that. So, it'd be three more years before we use it.
Twenty twenty-two, it would come back to the city again for Clark Street, which is, is at the top of the list right now. But Mickey said if, because that's far enough out, if we decide to use, take advantage of this money from Conoff to, or because of the Conoff project to do Clark Street, we can take Clark Street off of that for twenty twenty-two and put our next street, move our next street up a slot. And I can't remember what street Mickey said that was, another one.
Haven.
Haven, yes.
Well, my point to that being is normally we wouldn't get this grant funding in this period of time, so we wouldn't have this option. We'd have to use our funds to do an entire project, so.
Right, this is an additional amount that would not normally be in this rotation, would be a part of this rotation.
Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you. So, I, I understand the rotation a little bit. And you hit on, you hit on it because it's like color there, it's like, I had a question about the resolution, but anyway. Where, where does the money come from? Where, where, where is it coming from? Where's it, where are you proposing we get this two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars?
To lay this out there for you to have information, I'm not trying to say one way or another, which way you should, which I feel you should go. But what I will say is this, we have estimated that at the end of this year, when, well, of course, we already know that Irwin's going to carry into next year for some of the construction, but that aside, if, if, if Irwin and North Street are completed based on pretty much what, you know, they, what the bids came in at, there aren't any overruns and everything else, we would end this year with about a hundred and sixteen thousand in the two street funds, the major and the MDOT Street Repair Fund combined. That's the funds where the street millage comes into. That would be the end of this year. Then, in twenty twenty, when we send tax bills out again, about another two hundred and thirty thousand comes in annually from the street millage. So, that two hundred and thirty thousand that we collect in twenty twenty would add to the roughly a hundred and sixteen thousand that we estimate will end this year in. So, and, and of course, if we do this Clark Street, it's not going to get underway this year, it'll be in twenty twenty. So, next year, we should have roughly three hundred and forty-five thousand or so in those funds from the street repair or street millage. Now, the other thing that can happen too is there is some flexibility with Clark and Irwin on what, what money is used to cover some of the costs that are, you know, slated for the project because again, we had sewer lines, we had water lines, we have the street pavement. Some, Mickey's kind of agreed that there's a little flexibility in, you know, which funds actually pay how much. I mean, we could probably shuffle things a little bit to try to help out, to make sure we can cover it if, if you chose to go that way. Now, you know, again, it, it'll be tight, and there's not going to be extra money to do a lot of others, but, but it's taking advantage of a big chunk of money that's available to help a street that's in bad need. So, again, trying to just give you guys information and let you guys take a stab at what you feel is most important or what's, you know, what streets are.
Councilman Williamson.
I think this is, this is, this is just demonstrating how wonderful it is that we chose the city manager offer tonight at six, at the six o'clock meeting. So, one of the things I do want to say as a professional in the nonprofit industry and fundraising in particular, it's very rare that these types of matching opportunities arise from either governments or foundations to be able to support infrastructure, especially infrastructure. So, one of the things that we're voting on tonight is to allow the city to move forward in applying for the money. And then, something that can come later is as we onboard our new city manager and hoping that they'll accept the position and move forward, they can then help us as a council prioritize this project. You know, we could be told no, that we don't get the money at all, or they could say, sure, what do you want to do? And then, that's a really great opportunity for us to take advantage of the new city manager's experience in these kind of difficult situations and figuring out how do we fund these projects. So, I think tonight we need to think of this more as a vote of, yes, please apply, there's, there's a match, we never, this doesn't happen. Let's see if we can take a shot in the dark and maybe get it. And then, let's deal with the big fish when we finally have our city infrastructure in place with the new manager. That's how, that's how I'm looking at this. That's how I'd encourage my colleagues to look at this. I would never want to let money just sit on the table if we have an opportunity to grab it, especially if we have a new dynamic leader who can help us take advantage of it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you. Oh. I understand, and I agree with a lot of what Councilwoman Williamson said as far as you don't want money to sit at the table and not take advantage of it. But if you don't have the money to match the money that's at the table, sometimes you have to do what you can do instead of digging yourself in a hole. I'm going to tell you, I'm just going to be very honest and transparent with my, with my thoughts. The resolution even reads that Conoff has asked for this repair. It's like, we have residents that are begging to get their streets done. And they have come to meetings, it was one at Lewis Chapel I remember attending, like, we have people who are really upset about the condition of our street. And me, I'm speaking as a resident and a taxpayer, it doesn't say the residents have identified or the residents are asking you all to fix this street, this street. It's saying, you know, and I understand this is a great opportunity for a business over there, I get that, but we have people that have urgent needs and our roles are horrible here in residential areas. And for me to support trying to match with two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars that we don't even really have? And you said it would limit anything else we could do? I mean, and it's not guaranteed we're going to get the grant, but for me right now, I'm just, I, I would feel better if we had a plan to say we had a street plan, that would be great. I just don't want us to get in a habit of saying, oh, this is a great opportunity, we got to put money into this. And we're going to get to you, don't worry, but, oh, that's another, another great opportunity, we're going to go there. But we're going to get to you, don't worry. That, we cannot keep doing that. We need to have a plan, and we need to be able to justify why we're making the decisions that we're making when we're telling residents, yeah, we know your streets and your res, and your neighborhoods are horrible, but we, we've really got to help this Conoff thing look good over here. I'm just not comfortable with that, we don't have the money to do it, and we have pressing issues in residential areas. So, thank you all for, for your information, but I'm just being honest with my colleagues, that's where I'm at.
Certainly. Just to clarify, just how the resolution reads it, it reads that way because it is an economic incentive. And I completely understand and hear where you're coming from, but just, the approval of this resolution just allows us to continue with the application. Again, the project would not be set in stone. Again, the project would not be set in stone, we, we could be even awarded more than the three fifty from M dot. Based on our application and the needs of the assessment and everything. This is just allowing us to move forward with the application. It's not locking us into any project, but I understand exactly.
Councilwoman Lawler.
Well, could the resolution be written up different, just to say for us to go ahead and, um, and not be committed to the two forty-four, five ninety?
That's the template that, it's coming from M dot's applicant, like, they provide you with the template resolutions because of the type of grant that it is.
And they're looking for a, a clear indication that the city understands what it is. Councilmember Williamson.
Okay, so the, the standard language from M dot relating to this particular resolution says that if we are awarded and then accept the grant. Uh, that's how we would match. So the, the thing that we're forgetting is that we'll have to vote on this again if we get the money. So, or, or the city manager may decide to say, oh, no, that's not my, that's not where I wanna spend money, we're not gonna take that grant, and that'd be okay. So tonight, again, is just voting on the opportunity to go after this money, it is not voting on whether we will actually do that road. That's a vote that has to come much later after the grant is decided upon, so just reminding everyone that.
And there are no residents in this half mile on Clark Street?
Yeah.
There are a few.
Okay. Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify my comment, Ms. Snyder, um, in no way was I trying to, I was like, I get, I get this.
It's the same conversation we had amongst when just drafting this and.
We've all had this conversation, we totally understand. The, the issue is, if we didn't, if we didn't bring this to you, you know, and you found out that we had. Half, you know, an opportunity to fix half a road that we couldn't have fixed, I mean, so.
So we, we have totally had this exact same conversation, correct, as Councilmember Williamson, is, is what you're saying, Councilwoman Brown. We've gone through the gamut and this is where we're at, and the only way we can move forward is with this resolution and, and continue that process, and we can stop that process.
And, and if it was a different road that I, that didn't need repair, like this one really needs repair, I mean, this is a vital road. Right, there are a lot that really need it, but this is a vital road that needs repaired. And we can either use this grant money and fix a half mile of road, or we can just take our money and fix a quarter mile. So, I mean, that's just, yeah.
Councilwoman Spicer.
Thank you. So, um. This, at this point, this is, the application is not costing us anything except applying, correct, the application? And what type of time, do we have any idea when we might hear, I mean, if we've been awarded the grant, are we looking at maybe this year or next year?
I would say, yeah, before the end of this year. Because the project would be underway, um, next year and during twenty twenty.
Okay, um, because I, I, I heard a, a lot of, um, ifs and, um, ands and buts and. And given this and given that, so, um, but if it, if all it is, it's just an application, um, and we're not spending a dime, okay, then, thank you.
And if we get the grant, it creates an opportunity, and that's something that, uh, the city, the new city manager.
Right.
Uh, and the comprehensive infrastructure plan, which includes the streets, includes the streets, is being developed now. And, uh, so before we'd spend any money, that should be finished, and the city manager will have, will be right smack in the middle of it. Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you. So just a question off the top of my head, have we had any con- conversations with Canoffs on how we could possibly. Recoup some of this money, like, out of the thirty-four jobs that they're having, have we negotiated to say, you know, um, can you guarantee to hire ten percent of Albion's residents? Maybe we can get, you know, employment taxes coming, I mean, has there been any kind of negotiation to, um. Benefit the city of Albion and try to recruit some of this money that we're spending that we don't have, that we're being asked to consider spending that we don't have?
I would say not necessarily in the way that you're saying, uh, because it is a, an MEDC M dot project. It's under a category for job creation. It doesn't really, it doesn't give us that ability to negotiate for that. We basically are giving a set sum of money for each job created to, to rebuild the roads. A road or roads that provide the trucking for that said company. So, that's, that's where we get the, the, the dollar amount from.
Thank you.
So Mr. Me, would you, I thought your explanation was, there's X amount of money currently, there's gonna be X amount of money, add those up. Yes, there's enough money to pay for it, there's not an overabundance, there's not a surplus, uh, I think you even used the word tight. But you do anticipate the money will be there if the council votes to spend the money.
Correct. In, in a nutshell, or the way you summed it up is, is pretty much what I'm saying, I guess. If, if I truly felt we could not fund it, if I said, no, there absolutely is not enough money, I certainly would, you know. I think we can come up with it if you, as council, decide that this is a project you wanna do. Um, we can come up with it in, in some manner that, and I'm not, I'm not saying that makes it sound kind of fishy the way I'm saying it, yeah. Legally, we have some different avenues we can look at, we can come up with the money if it is a project you want to pursue. I'm just trying to also say that, um, that pot is not going to be very large then when we're done between North Street. Um, Irwin and Clark, it'll be, it'll take a dump, but again, you got the millages out there each year. You know, money's coming in each year to build it back up too, so.
Was it you, Councilmember Clark, that had a question? Somebody over here, I saw your hand go up.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sort of with Sonia here. So if, if, so even if we build the money back up with the millages. Um. I just don't understand how we can, I do understand how we can go forward just to see where, where we're at and what we're going to get. I understand that part, I'm there. But at the same token is, even if we figure out that we can do that. In the future, when it comes around, if I don't see any type of plan to show what we're gonna do within our city, I can't even support it. So I don't know if it's even worth. Applying for it if, if we can't show what we can do within our own city, just, I mean, I understand that, that area, but, yeah.
That area isn't our, isn't our own city.
I understand that, but I'm saying, I rode down my street in my district and I rode down all the other districts other than Clark Street. And I didn't see dirt roads on Clark Street.
The only thing that.
Strictly down to the dirt pavement.
The, the one thing about this that makes it very difficult, i- in addition to it being, you know, finance is always, you know, the, the, the money is always an issue. This particular one is particularly, particularly difficult because of the very, very short timeframe. Cause as Director Phillips mentioned, the closing date for this funding actually ended. Week or two before we even heard this was happening, but M dot was gracious enough to allow us to put the letter of interest in. And then they said we could then go forward, but we will have a very, very short window, so that's only, and this is part of it, is getting the council approval, so.
Can I, to speak to Councilwoman Clark, uh, we do have the transportation asset management plan underway. We are developing that, so, you know, that, that is still in the works, this is just one of those sidelines. And, and I think it was said too that, you know, we get these special projects in this money and we go do them. I think we need to take a look at this, but yes, there, there, there is an asset management plan for transportation being done as we speak for the rest of the town. That is still ongoing, and, and that will be matched with the water and the sewer and every, all the other. Infrastructure parts of those roads as well, so I don't know if that helps in, in, in this, in what you were asking or where you were heading with it.
Councilmember Williamson.
So, again, I think, I think it is in the city's best interest that we at least allow the team at the city to move forward with applying. Uh, for completing the application. It's, it's good to see what the a- a possibility is there. I wanna agree, I wanna agree with Councilmember Clark and Councilwoman Brown about seeing this project in, as it relates to the bigger picture. I think that by the time this project comes back to the city, and I'm, I'm seeing some nodding, but I'm hoping that there will be. Something in place that's gonna show us where this falls in line with everything else. I think, I think there's some frustration, and part of it is we don't have a chief administrator here right now, we don't have a city manager, we don't. We, I mean, we have, sorry, stat, we do have a city, he's wonderful, he's. We're, we're keeping it all together down here, but I think that the frustration on some of my colleagues' heart is that we just don't know where we're going. It's like we are kind of shooting in the dark, and then these opportunities arise, and then there doesn't seem to be a definitive plan, and then there's a lot of like, well, maybe if we pull it out of this one, this thing. I think, I think people will want some clarity around what does it mean that we're gonna let this fund build up and then this fund build up? And what does that look like next to the money that we're gonna get from this entity? And I think that that's something that, uh, we've struggled with at least since I've been on council and probably before. Um, but, but again, I wanna urge, I wanna urge my fellow councilmembers, just let us, let the city go after the resources, see if it's even available to us. I think that people in the fifth precinct who use that road, I use that road, I, I know, it, it is, it is one of those, like, it's not the, one of the primary. Thoroughfares into the city, but it is something that's used a lot, and it is, it is in bad condition, again, not as bad as many of the roads in town as well. Uh, but if we would not be offered this money at any other time, I think it's good to see what's available to us. Uh, and again, working with the new city manager, figure out if that's a priority for us, or if there's another area we need to focus on. Again, it also is a little distressing, uh, to hear that we've learned about this opportunity. After the. And so hopefully, hopefully with a new administration, that'll help guide, uh, us keeping on top of that or figuring that out before those things happen. So, thank you so much for the work that the three of you are doing. I mean, it is hard to get up here on nights like this and be like, well, maybe, and.
And, and some of this stuff can't be helped with the M dot grants, because their deadline had nothing to do with Canoff's announcement.
Right.
Jobs, and so it's all the timing of how that all fits. Um, I mean, I could say the same thing about hiring this officer and having everything squashed together real quick is because of timing of other things and other events, you know, and so.
And the other piece is, I know that we can't, I know that we can't necessarily say you have to hire a certain amount of people from our community and things like that to the business. It would be, it would be interesting to see if in the future, how they would like to partner with us in fixing their road. Uh, because, and it is, it is our road, it's ours, road is the city and the residents who are there, but it would be interesting to see what kind of ways that they could partner with us. And, and, in a really responsible manner, it, it is, that, that would be a good thing to consider for the future. Uh, I yield.
Okay, so I wanna compliment both of you and our new city manager and Mickey Bittner for bringing this up. Because this was a very short fuse thing and it was tied off of, uh, Canoff's announcement, so, uh, I, I compliment you on that. And I agree that it makes, to me, it makes perfect sense to put the application in, see what that comes back. And that will provide, potentially provide an opportunity for our incoming city manager. It will also, before the grant would go into effect, I don't know when we would hit, we would get an answer when we'd have to, to fund it. Uh, but that, you will have to come back and let us know how that lines up with the infrastructure plan, which again, kudos to you. And Chief Scott for moving forward on that and developing that, that's something that, you know, we're doing now, and congratulations and thank you for doing it. Uh, I would, would hate to have us not apply for this and not even see if we have the opportunity. And make a tool or a resource that potentially the city could use with the city manager coming in. And I think he made it very, very clear, development in other parts of the city is paramount, so. Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Almost forgot what I was gonna ask. Um, so I think, um, Mr. Me, you talked about, um, having a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. At the end of the year with both street funds, is that the major and the minor street?
That, okay, so.
Ultimately, what I'm, what I'm trying to figure out is, say we apply for this grant, um, we get approved. And then at that time, you know, the position will be, well, we gotta scrape it up, this is a great, we gotta come up with this three hun- two hundred and forty-four. So we know, if we get approved, we're gonna have to figure out how to do this, because that's what we'll be, my question is. With what you, the numbers that you crunched, is, are we looking at taking funds from the minor street repair? Plan that we already talked about?
No, because when the street, when the three mills that's levy per street millage comes in, that essentially all comes into one fund for street repair. Internally, we just break that down, if the project happens to be an M dot street where they are helping. We break that down into a separate fund to help us track the M dot grants that go along with the project. But it's still, that three mills that comes in, it's, we use that money for both the major and the local street. You know, any street repairs we do comes from that three mills, from that street millage.
But you are correct, the funds that we talked about expending next year would be those funds for this instead of that.
So, the money that we talked about doing first, second, third rail and all that? Would be affected by.
You would have to do this instead of that, correct.
Thanks.
Okay. Councilwoman Lawler.
Thank you. Can we call out a question?
Yep, please read the roll.
Councilmember Lawler.
Takes five votes.
But we're gonna vote now, right?
You can't just say, okay, yeah, we're gonna vote now. Her motion to call the question, which takes five votes, it takes five of us to say, yeah, we're ready to vote, we won't talk anymore.
So call the roll so we can see if we're gonna vote.
Do we have a support?
Support.
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Reed. Brown.
Yes.
And Mary Edgerton.
Yes. Now would you call the roll so we can see whether the motion pass, which will authorize them to go forward and apply for the grant?
Councilmember Spicer.
Conditional yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Clark.
No.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
No.
Lawler.
No.
And Mary Edgerton.
Yes. All right. Next item, Michigan Marijuana Regulatory Agencies ho- holding a public forum on the Social Equity Outreach Program on Thursday, twenty-nine August. At the Ismen House, the time of that is ten AM to two PM. Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you. Is, is this the only time they're coming?
No, they have another date, I don't know what it is off the top of my head. They had already made arrangements with the library, uh, to hold it there. But there was a, an issue with the air conditioning, and so we found an alternative location. They set the time, they asked for the date and the time.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm wondering, so on the twenty-ninth, they'll be here at the Ismen House from ten AM to two PM?
That is correct.
But they are planning to come back at a later date?
That is correct.
Okay, see, I don't know who's in touch with, um, I don't know who's in touch with the, the Equity Outreach Coordinator person. But could we, um, express, um, our desire to maybe have a, a later time where people who are like working and busy?
Yes, and I've already expressed that desire.
Okay, so are they just coming down twice, or you're not, but you know they will be here at least twice?
Yes, I know they have a second date, I just don't recall when it is. They, they set this up and they invited the city to have folks there, uh, but they are aware that currently we, we have opted out. And so we have, uh, this, a chance to come back and reconsider the ordinance, so they said, we understand if the city would prefer not to participate in this. And I said, no, we, we absolutely support having the information. I'll be there, I made contact with the EDC, they're gonna have reps there, but pretty much our role is gonna be to sit, learn and listen, like everybody else. Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you. So I just wanna, this is the opportunity that I read about, that the state is trying to, um. They're offering incentives to select communities, correct, to. To, um, and those communities were selected based on their poverty rate, but there are select communities that were chosen as part of this social equity program to help their local residents do the recreational marijuana businesses and get these different, okay, help me if I'm wrong.
Okay, so in, in the packet, in the, in the packet, there's, you saw it, okay.
I did.
Okay, so there's two criti- two cri- two criteria upon which the, I think there's a total of nineteen cities. One, they looked at the county and picked, needed to be in a county where the prosecution rate or conviction rate, conviction rate was higher than the state average, Calhoun County fits that. And then they look for municipalities and communities within that county where third, more than thirty percent of the population is below the federal poverty level. Albion fits that, okay? So they're coming to provide information on what type of assistance, and how people, what would be required for them to be eligible. The, the specific incentives that I'm aware of is they reduced the licensing fee, they provide, I'm going to call it technical assistance guidance on how to go through the, the licensing process, and additional information. And I think they, part of this, they may be providing small business information. So that's what, this is like the initial contact and, and information for our community.
So, and my understanding on, on what I've read is, it's, it's not so much, it's, it's targeted towards individuals, it's not so much resources for the city as it is people that are trying to apply for the licenses, for businesses that are trying to apply for the license.
So, I, 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 I read articles too. The opportunities I thought were for residents of that community.
Yes.
Okay, so people who live here would have these, okay.
If they have been a continuous resident for at least five years.
Right, okay, okay.
So this is, this is, bring it to the full council's attention, that they are coming on Thursday, the twenty ninth. The location is the Ismen House, and that will start at ten AM and plan on being done at two PM. All council members are, are welcome to attend, obviously, as is all members of the community. I'm going to be there, and I know at least one representative from the Economic Development Corporation will be there. I asked Amy DePries to have people present, because if this goes forward in our community, then there will probably be a number of people that are looking at the Economic Development Corporation here in Albion as potential sources of assistance. And so again, at this point, it is primarily for city officials and the EDC to have an understanding, to learn about this. We're probably not going to be able to answer any specific questions at this point. Councilwoman Brown.
So do you know what the format is, like, say, okay, I work, so say I can't get there till twelve thirty. For that four hour span, is it like, I don't know, do you know what the format is?
I will tell you what I believe it is, what they told me, and to the best of my understanding, this is what it is. They have a presentation that they're going to explain the ins and outs, and then they're going to have tables set up adjacent to one another, they didn't want it in separate spaces, where they're going to answer individuals' question, and I believe each table is going to set, be set up to deal with a specific type of license.
Okay, have you had discussions with them about presenting to the council?
We'll wait and see what they have to say, and then I brought this forward, part of this, this discussion is, do we want to have them come in and brief the council? I assumed you would, but.
Okay, okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
No problem. So, this, this came up with an email, I think, last week, and back and forth with McCa- I can't remember her last name, anyway. So, they're coming, I know they have another date set up, and I know they would, from her conversation, they would welcome the opportunity to come to council.
And then I just want more housekeeping things.
Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you, so, if, if, people probably need to notice this meeting in case all the council does show up. That needs to be noticed, right, because the city's, duh, going.
Well, I, I mean, the mere presence of council members at a meeting doesn't necessarily necessitate the notice, it's if you're going to be discussing or deliberating.
Or asking.
Towards a decision. So, just really depends on what council plans to do at that meeting.
So I plan to ask a lot of questions, like I always do.
And I, I think the re- I mean, I'm sure many council members there will have questions, but the, the, the question is, is, do you take those questions and then go to your, you know, to other council members there and say, hey, here's what I think about this, what do you think?
Oh, we shouldn't do that.
It becomes more of the necessity of noticing it to comply with the OMA.
So I'm going to yield to your legal professional opinion on this, but I think noticing it would just be safe, so we can go in and, and talk and discuss, and, I mean, we would be taking action, but I, it, but whatever you, whatever your suggestion is, Attorney.
Well, it just depends on whether the council can behave itself.
Well, I don't know, we don't have a good reputation, so.
Any other council members have questions or comments? While our city attorney is mulling that one over. Well, I guess that would be a good question, since the timing is not the most conducive for a variety of folks, which council members believe they will attend that on, it's this Thursday, the twenty ninth? So it looks like we have more than a quorum, and so the, the guidelines are, how would you publicly notice it, or how would the city do that? And if we don't do that, basically, everybody can go and listen, and we could ask a question, but we couldn't have discussion amongst the council members.
Yeah, I, I think as long as the council isn't discussing the information that you're taking in, or the questions that are being asked, you're not going to be able to follow the, of the Open Meetings Act. But if you engage in those discussions, and it, and the meeting hasn't been noticed, then it becomes a problem. So as long as you're not discussing things that day with each other.
With each other.
But we're in the same room, it's the open room, and, and that's hard to not do, when you can hear my question or my comment to the facilitator. I'm not talking to you directly, but you're hearing my thoughts, you're hearing where I'm leaning on this issue. So I would just suggest to be on the safe side, just, it's no different than any other meeting, just notice this, stick it up for the thing.
But since the city's not hosting the meeting, it's a public meeting.
Yeah, but, I mean, the, who's hosting it isn't, isn't going to be the deciding factor.
So what's, what's, if we want to be squarely within the, the boundaries of any, and beyond reproach, what do we do?
You can, you could notice it up as, whether it's a study session, or a, or a special meeting, or just as long as you're making the public aware that there, that a quorum of council might be at.
Okay.
This place on this time, I mean, but then, you know, you've got to make sure that it's accessible to the public.
Ismen House is accessible, handicap accessible and everything, so.
I would suggest noticing that it's a study session, because there's going to be no action to.
We take that on board for action and see to it, we do what we need to do, we get that message out, and get a notification to the public.
So I, it, it really just depends on what the council does that day, I mean, and, and I guess I would, I would ask, I mean, ordinarily, under our charter, ordinarily, I attend the meetings of the councils, however, given that that's the middle of the day, I probably wouldn't be able to be there.
I would really pull back from saying this is a city council meeting in any way. There's going to be city council members there, there's going to be more than a quorum present, we're probably all going to be asking questions, but it's not our meeting. So.
And we need to be informed.
Sorry?
I said, and we need to be informed on this, because this thing is, it's just a mess in the first place. We can post it just like we did the meeting, right?
Sounds great, that's perfect. Okay. All right. Future agenda items. Future agenda items from council members. Councilwoman Brown, we haven't heard from you very much this evening.
And I said, I wasn't going to talk a lot today, um, the Don Ralphel Street, I mean, the Don Ralphel site, I just want to make sure it's on the next agenda.
I think we got it straight this time.
Okay.
Okay, any other council?
And just to speed, the information she's going to get from.
Okay. Okay, I have a couple, one is, the Calhoun County Land Bank will be here to give us a presentation, an update on Union Steel. They have communicated to the city that they went out and got bids, and they have what they consider is a very good bid, and I believe the total cost for the demolition is four hundred and seventy eight thousand, somewhere in that neighborhood, is that your recollection?
Right.
Okay. And so they want to come and talk to us about that, remind us of all the money they've spent tearing down buildings and whatnot, and say, please, City of Albion, provide three hundred thousand. So they're going to come, make a presentation, update us, and we'll listen. I'm, I'm not going to put it on the agenda, I don't think we should put it on the agenda to make any sort of decision, we're just going to get information, and then we will wait until our dynamic, effective new city manager will be in the midst of that discussion. So, Union Steel Presentation by Calhoun County Land Bank, just be aware they're, they're coming with police, police City of Albion fund part of the demolition cost, oh yes, and then assume the responsibility and pay for all of the environmental studies that go with that. Okay. Second item, I'm sorry, Councilmember Williamson?
Uh, well, in anticipation of that, are there any things that the County Land Bank has neglected in the community as far as maintenance of their lands, keep, upkeeping it? Just would like to have that on record as well, so, if they're going to come, I'm, all the great things they've done, I'd also want to know where some things that they have.
All right. Next item is Dr. Jess Roberts from Albion College coming, giving us an update on Big Read twenty nineteen. And got a request from the Albion, from Albion's Tree Committee, and information provided to me today on how, what Albion would need to do to obtain and restore our status as Tree City USA. So there'll be information in the packet, and that'll probably be put forward to have a discussion, and ask council if you want to make a decision. I know there are four things that we have to meet, most of them are, I believe, are not that challenging, but the, the one item that will be challenging is the, in order to have that status, the city has to have a budget established that is equal to or greater than two dollars per capita per year. And if we have eight thousand residents, that means we would need to budget, what, sixteen thousand dollars a year, so that I see as the biggest issue, but we'll have a discussion on that. Yes, Councilmember Williamson?
Your Tree City USA agenda item has spurred me back to a conversation we had a couple weeks ago about the critical trees that are being taken down across the city. I would love to have an update on that, just because I haven't seen a lot being taken down, but that doesn't mean that they're not, because I know that there were a couple just in six that are on that list too, and I know they're still up. So if we could just get a little kind of demo, if they're out with that, that'd be great.
Okay. Any other future agenda items by council? Public comments, if you have public comments this evening, come forward, please, state your name and address.
Garrett Brown, ten sixteen South Superior Street, Albion, Michigan. I just want to thank councilmembers Lawler, Clark, and Brown regarding the, the grant thing there, because there was, what's his name? Mr. Duncan, I believe, on Second Street. Was very persistent about asking for support for those, I want to say wild, first, second, third street, and the council did commit to that, so I don't know what the, the, the legal implications of, of that are, but I, I just want to repeat that, yeah, people are looking for, or waiting for when the, the positive things that are happening in the city actually will reach, reach them. The other thing is, I, I don't know what, at what point the state is, has, has completed its kind of regulatory framework for recreational marijuana, but I know I haven't heard the council really address that. I know that if it's like the, the medical framework, there are at least four of the five licenses that would not have a public facing component, and would still be able to bring revenue into the city. And I think the other thing that was missing from the comments regarding the, the structure of that program is that for individuals who were convicted, I believe, of a drug-related, maybe marijuana-related crime, there was even, there was like a, an extra bonus reduction in fees for them. So really, when, when the voters in the state passed the, the law in November to, to legalize recreation, recreational marijuana, I think that was another kind of positive component to basically try to undo some of the, the negative impacts that law enforcement, or the enforcement of the law around that has had on different demographics. So I think that, that's something that the city should pick up, I haven't heard too much about that, but I think that needs to be addressed, because I've heard murmurings of efforts to maybe put that before the, the voters, and, and, but I, but I think this, it, it hasn't been, in that sense, it hasn't been fleshed out and explained how it's a, it's a little bit more complicated than just saying yes or no to dispensaries or whatnot, because there are perhaps five different types of licenses that deal with that production process, so, thank you.
Ms. Brown? Any other public comments this evening? County Commissioner Tompkins.
It's late, I mean, I don't want to keep you guys for three seconds, a little three seconds, all right, go quickly. Good evening, everybody, Gary Tompkins, your county commissioner, it's always great to be with you folks each and every month. Hey, you know what I just heard tonight, is the very reason why we have to change the road funding in the state of Michigan. The fact that you had to sit and, and thwart over what you're going to do futuristically speaking, and quite frankly, every road is important, no matter where you live, and quite frankly, you take the opportunity, if you, if most of you have, take a look at the opportunity, look at my newsletter, and tell your state representative Hotsma, and tell your senator Bison to really look at something different. Because right now, as it stands in this, as we're at, at the budget process in the state of Michigan, we're nowhere to be found. Nobody is, there's no ideas, there's nothing out there, other than I'm, I'm on this side, I'm on this side, and that's where we're at. So it's just sad, the fact that I wish that our state reps and our state senators would watch the video of you folks going round and round, not in a bad way, every street in the city of Albion is important. The point of the matter is, you shouldn't have to be dealing with these type of issues, if there was proper funding, and also if there was a proper system in which truly funded roads the way they need to be funded, so. All right, thank you very much, that's all I had to say, thank you.
Thanks, sir. City managers report.
Just two updates, Nor Street should be wrapping up in the next two weeks, it's supposed to be completed by Labor Day, might be just a little bit before that, so by our next meeting, that should be completed, and the Irwin Avenue project started last Monday, and so that project's underway at this point.
Any questions by council for the city manager on that report? Okay. Comments by council members? Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, um, can, if I could make a suggestion about item G being, if you, the mayor could kind of like let your infrastructure team know about the things that we talked about and the concerns that we talked about here at the council meeting? Because I would want my representative, Ms. Rice, to be able to make a successful and informed decision, and to especially let Mr. Dunkland know that this, this grant, or that this grant could affect the twenty twenty project, please.
Okay, now, I, I was trying to figure out how it tied in with medical mar- or recreational marijuana, but I'm looking at the wrong one, so.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I know, I'm, I'm on track with you now.
It's the F, I'm sorry.
Yep, that's okay. And it actually is G, because we made a change, so yes, I got it. Yep. And we'll be having an infrastructure meeting on Wednesday, so I will be, absolutely will do that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, you're welcome. Count, comments by other council members?
Oh, I don't.
Go ahead, Councilmember Lawler.
Okay, um, did we get the results of the infrastructure for the rolls, if we did, I missed?
The Pacer?
Um, for the infrastructure that Mr. Mickey did, did we get a copy of that?
I don't believe so.
Can we have one?
I'm, I'm sure we can, we're gonna have, I know that Kent was going through it, and I don't know if he was done with it, but, yeah.
If it's available, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments by council?
No.
Okay, so just a couple of quick announcements, reminder for the four-H, uh, presentation performance tomorrow with the Bone, the, uh, for those that are gluttons for punishment, the Planning Commission meeting tomorrow night at seven, uh, Walk the Beat is this weekend, uh, lots of good, uh, folks showing up for that, and in preparation for that, we're going to, uh, get volunteers to help kinda go down and sweep and clean up Superior Street, uh, on Thursday from two to five, and, uh, last but not least, a reminder that Saturday, the fourteenth of September, we'll be doing the Community Unity Volunteer, and, and ask people to turn out for that, talk to your churches and organizations, uh, and I guess the last thing I wanted to mention is, this is the seventy-fifth anniversary of D-Day, not today, but this year, it was actually sixth of June, uh, but September second will be the seventy-fourth anniversary of Japan, Japan signing the, uh, surrender and officially declaring World War II over, so there'll be a proclamation for our, uh, first council meeting in September, and we're going to invite all of the World War II veterans that are still with us here in Albion to come, and, uh, we'll, we'll honor them for that. Next year will be the seventy-fifth anniversary, and I'm working with the American Legion, and hopefully we'll be able to have a, a nice, uh, memorial ceremony for the, the living World War II veterans in the area within a twenty-five, thirty-mile radius, and, uh, recognition for, uh, all of the folks in Albion that served in World War II, and invite anybody that has a family member, friend, relative, or whatever, that died in World War II, or has deceased since then, uh, to provide a picture, and we'll, we'll pay recognition and om- homage to them, so, and with that...
I have one more quick one.
Okay.
Oakland Hospital has their new CEO welcome reception, uh, Thursday afternoon at the Courtyard Marriott from four to six, so if you'd like, wanna meet new Oakland Hospital CEO Greg B., um, that would be a good opportunity for you to do that, and their Facebook page will have that announcement as well.
Okay, and with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Support.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Or adjourned? Yes. Yes.